Call is the order of the town council's work session for the town of New Windsor for September sixteenth. Approval of minutes from the August nineteenth, two thousand twenty-four work session meeting. Do you hear a motion for approval?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from the August nineteenth work session meeting as written.
I'll second.
You got a second, we got a motion and a second to approve the minutes. Any comments or questions? All those in favor, sing if I'm going to sing aye.
Aye.
Opposed, so carried. Untagged, unlicensed vehicles update and continued discussion.
So, at this point, what I started doing was targeting vehicles that I was getting complaints on and/or that were parked on the roadway. To the conclusion of three violations that I sent out, all have been amended, except for one. The one vehi- oh, do I have?
Yeah, sorry.
There was a vehicle that was in violation that clearly didn't look like it had moved in a very long amount of time. But the owner reached out to me and she, it is operable, she's going to move it on a more consistent basis, so there's not complaints on that. I did get a complaint about an untagged vehicle parked in a carport on private property. I have not gotten any response to that. The difficult situation here is a lot of these vehicles are parked on private property and they are untagged. Which means I would be issuing a violation not knowing who the owner is of the vehicle and just issuing it to the property address. I'm not getting a lot of response from people that I've sent out violations to. So, I do have citations that I'm ready to issue. The town code says that any vehicle that is inoperable or untagged or unregistered needs to be in a building, a garage, four walls.
Concrete.
And a roof. There's a lot of houses and properties in the town of New Windsor that don't have access to that kind of stuff. Which is, I think we're going to get a lot of complaints that are going to come in about that. Like, how has it been like this for so many years? I've lived here so many years and now you're telling me that I have to build a garage to keep my vehicle, you know? So, I'm looking for whatever it is that you guys, which direction you want to take it, how you want to pursue, and I'm all ears.
Well, I would just say initially that the, that the complaint that it's been like this for years is, won't be as, as valid because we, this is the exact reason why we brought the code enforcement officer role in, into a position. Because we had to enforce the rules that were established. So, yes, there is some adjustment and I think we've been more than willing to, to work with property owners for, for years now. So, that might, I don't think that would be a valid argument.
I mean, I'm not trying to argue, I'm just saying this is going to be a.
It'll be an argument.
It'll be an argument.
It's going to be something that's going to come up. It's going to be an issue and, and we just need to be prepared for that.
That's one of the responses and other responses that we've been hearing from other citizens who are complaining about it more.
It's been that way for years.
Yeah, so that's all, you know.
They're also complaining more because now we're responding.
Exactly.
Responsive, so, you know.
It's always been that way is not, like, I agree with you, people are going to say that, but my response is, well, that's, you know, it shouldn't have been always that way. Now we have some resources to deal with it and we're going to.
It's the so what defenses. I used to work for a man who always said, that was his favorite, so what? Also, in addition to the language that requires vehicles to be inside, in the regular, if you will, nuisances section, it is prohibited to have, and all of them don't fit this category, but disassembled, dismantled, partially dismantled, inoperable, junked, wrecked, or unlicensed motor vehicles, truck bodies, tractors, trailers, boats, or campers in such a state of physical or mechanical ruin as to be incapable of self-propulsion. I have days like that. Or of being operated on the public streets other than at a business where it's being repaired. So, the whole.
We don't have a whole lot of issues with that unless it's rubbish or something that I can't tell is the part of the vehicle.
Yeah.
The other thing is, the, I literally would have to physically go onto these people's property to determine some of these situations. Not, most of them don't have tags. The only way for me to find out ownership would be to get the VIN number, which also creates a dilemma of, I don't have the deputy here all the time when I'm here to run the tags.
Why would you need the VIN number?
I have, you want me to issue a violation to somebody that doesn't own the vehicle?
Well, you can issue it to the property owner.
No, I do that anyway, but.
The town code does not say that you issue it to the owner of the vehicle. The, the problem is that the vehicle is on a property, so the, the citation would go to the property owner.
But the vehicle owner would still be responsible as well to be properly notified.
Might, might not.
I don't think so.
Our obligation is to notify the owner or owners, occupier or occupiers of any premises which they deem to be in a state of nuisance. So, even if you've got a rental, we should, both with our rental housing and with our ability to find out from addresses from SDIT, who was the license, who's the registered owner of properties. And it's, it's a pain, I mean, I know that, but if the sentiment is that we're tired of talking about it for ten years, there, there might be other, kind of other ways to make people wake up.
I mean, if I have, you know, if my son leaves his junky car on my property and he doesn't live in here anymore, whose responsibility is it's mine?
Ultimately, it's yours.
You know, it's, it's, I don't care who the car belongs to.
Responsibility to get, get it off your property.
Right.
You're not necessarily responsible for the vehicle itself once it's towed off if it gets junked or whatever. Or it gets towed to the.
I mean, this is similar thinking to the.
How can I even know? I know where you tow in Baltimore City, unfortunately.
I'm sorry to hear that. Well, you know, like the nuisance house ordinance doesn't start with the tenant, it starts with the landlord. This is the same kind of thing.
Yeah, the landlord's responsibility is to keep the tenant in check.
It's my house, it's my responsibility.
If it is a rental property, it is to be hoped we would know who owns it.
I would send it to the actual physical address and then the property owner anyway.
Okay.
And you can even tack that on the, you can, service is good if it is tacked on the main building on the premises. So, you can go on to property to do that.
Oh, I know I can.
Yeah, I mean, you know that.
It's the fact that I'm not armed anymore and I don't have a capable.
No, and have some company.
I don't want to get into the concealed carry laws in Maryland. It's outside of my scope.
I mean, my.
No, I know.
So, that kind of addresses vehicles, okay? Vehicles that are capable of self-propulsion, but it does not, does not address other types of vehicles like mobile homes that are pulled by vehicles and trailers and things, and things like that.
I can tell you that that, that's been my biggest response is honestly from the people with the trailers. If I've sent out a notification to anybody that had their trailer parked on the roadway, they put it on their property.
I'm talking about in their yard, if we, if they have a mobile home, a trailer.
Code to prove.
There's nothing in the code that states they can't park it on their private property.
Now, there might be something.
Okay.
If it's an HOA property.
It still has to be licensed and registered, okay? I know for a fact we have vehicles in town that have not been on the road since maybe nineteen ninety-six. Quite sure it's not registered or tagged or licensed. It just sits as a storage facility in their yard. It is not a shed, it's a mobile home, or it's a trailer.
Camper.
Camper, thank you. And I get complaints about it quite frequently. And I'm looking to help the constituents that, that complain to me about it. And Joan cannot see the back of that to see if there's a license plate on it or a valid sticker.
Sticker, yeah.
Okay. Or, you know, or, but what, what are we going to do about that?
Well, there is something in your code that we can utilize, but it's time consuming and it can be costly. And those of us who've been around since the park on the corner was not a park on the corner, we remember what we had to do. We had to get, and your, your code provides to get an administrative warrant. You come, you file with the court, the circuit court, and you say that there's reasonable cause, that there's a violation of the code on this property and you'd have to be pretty detailed because the, the court here is not going to be tremendously eager to have government run around on people's private property. It's just the way it is. But you say, you've sent, you know, you'd have to make this, make the story. This is the correspondence we had, you tried to reach them, you tacked it on the building, they've never responded. We've got seventy-two other complaints and please, your honor, issue an administrative warrant for us and our designee to go on to the property to determine if there is, and to what extent there is, violations of the town code. It's not an overnight process and it costs money and you, the court still has the authority to say, nah, I don't think so.
But this.
They didn't, in our case.
This individual would not want it to go to court.
That's, that's.
They're going to want to take care of it.
That's what happens, yeah.
Prior to.
But it doesn't sound like we've done anything because in that case, at this point.
I don't even know what property you're talking about.
It could be any property because it could be, it could be several properties that had campers on them, but it, it sounds like you're saying that, and I could be wrong, Joan, so please correct me, but it sounds like you're saying because our code says you can park campers, if a camper is, is parked, even though it's clearly not being used, you, you have not done anything at this point, is that correct? Like, if somebody had a camper, like an old camper, just sort of sitting there, you couldn't see the tag, but.
Determine if it's licensed or not.
Yeah.
So, we haven't done any of what you're saying we'd have to do.
Yeah.
What would be the first step in that case?
I think some of, that is the first step and.
Well, we, we said before that we were going to send a letter to the property owner.
Don't, don't they have to prove? Can't we ask the residents to prove that it's a registered?
You can.
I could also probably go with another section of the code for keeping the property maintenance.
Yeah.
Because that doesn't fall, that violates sections in there as well. So, it could be a dual, could be a dual thing.
We just send a letter, say, there's, we believe there's a violation and then they have to prove, no, there's not.
Well, they don't.
They don't have to, but you would think that if we would at least send a.
Yeah.
From the, the other correspondence that we had with the, the vehicles, we've gotten a positive response. You would think that if we send a letter, maybe by any chance.
I can tell you honestly, from dealing with this and sending violations, when it comes to the property maintenance and the trimming of things and the excessive things, people read the code different than other people and some don't feel as if they're violating anything and then it's their private property and they want to put with, you know, so.
It's my thirty-year-old big wheel and I want to leave it there.
That's a whole other issue.
If we never reach out to them, how do we know that?
I've reached out to them, but they're not responsive, like crickets in the night. And sometimes the letters that she sends come back to us. They don't, they don't even accept. I mean, yeah, I can't make people collect their mail or.
Do you send them regular and certified? Yeah, that's what I thought. So, you know they're getting them, they're just not responding, because the regular mail doesn't come back.
Right.
Right, just the certified mail comes back.
But that's the first step and from what we heard, that wasn't done on the RVs, correct?
No, I, I can't, this is the first I'm hearing of a specific complaint about RVs, like.
The complaint that we received the letter.
We received a letter.
About this property.
It's not an RV, it's a camper.
I still, I still, and in the dark, I, I didn't see it, I don't know.
What's the difference between an RV and a camp?
One has a motor.
One pulls.
Oh, okay, so just a pull behind is just a camper.
Over behind, fifth wheel, a camper.
I have all the two wheels on mine, so we pull it.
The notices are going out, when I get a complaint, notices go out. If I'm driving around and I notice that a vehicle has been parked here for a long, a long amount of time, if there's excessive vehicles in their properties, but yeah, a lot of the time I don't get a response at all, so I just.
So, you keep, you keep track of that?
Now that we have the citation system, I keep track of when I send the first violation, I keep track when I send the second violation and I have yet to actually issue a citation yet, but like I was showing her, I pulled it up to give her an idea of what it looks like because eventually it's going to get to that point. The other flip side of these vehicles is the code says that they can apply for a vehicle under repair or states that the vehicle is currently being worked on and the parts are being ordered and they'd have to prove all that, but then it's a ten-dollar fee to the town and we don't have the form.
Now, we can make, that's easy enough.
So, we'd have to get an updated form, but yeah, there's other things that are going to come up if we.
So, I think it would be important for the town council to see every month that list, your citation list, so that we had an idea. So, we don't have to baseline this every time we have a meeting. We don't know which ones you sent, which ones haven't responded because as the leaders of this town and, and the voted leaders of this town, we need to stay on top of these things and not just bring it up every three months and, and then talk about it and then it fades away for three more months and then we find out, well, we issued some and some got answered and some didn't get answered. We need to regularly be on top of this and then our citizens need to see.
An application for an administrative warrant.
And, you know, we, we made provisions in our code that people can have vehicles that they need to work on because I'm one of those kind of guys that likes to work on my car and it may be sitting around, right?
I can figure out a spreadsheet, I just scroll on.
So, we, if we need to have a form created, for goodness sake, that's, that's easy peasy, right? We should have a, a form that they could come and pay their ten dollars and work on their car.
I updated the old form.
Oh, okay, I didn't know we had an old form.
Never, nobody ever applied.
Yeah.
For the work, vehicle under construction? Yeah, we have, we have a form.
Okay, so we have, we have all the tools in place to make this work. We just have no consistency that we stay on top of it from the town council perspective and I think we need to do a better job of doing that. Joan's out there issuing things and not getting responses, then the town council needs to take this next step on these residents that are ignoring what we're asking them to do. If they have the valid information that shows that their vehicle is not, then we back off, fine. But if they don't, then we take it to the next step to do what's right for the rest of the town.
What does your citation timeline look like? How many, how often and how many warnings before you get to citation?
I've only been giving two violation notices, but I haven't, the ones that I did in the beginning where I wasn't getting a response after the second violation, then this all became, so then I redid the forms and I redid the citations and I consulted with her in reference to what would happen if we actually had to issue a citation because none of those, those steps were implemented when we started this and we started receiving all the complaints.
So, we have not actually formally issued citations with a, you have ten, the statute provides like ten days to reply or. Ameliorate the problem.
So, how, how far?
To, you know, to claim they want to go to district court, which is their option. If you send them a citation, they can respond with, I want to, I want a judge to hear this. I want my day in court and they'll get it and we'll have to go to court, somebody like me and you, we'll have to go to court. And we've done that before, we haven't done it in quite a while, but we haven't had to do it in quite a while, partly because we did it a few times and then people shaped up, but you know, new people, new slides.
So, how often are a citea, or how often are like violation warnings getting sent out?
Right now, I can honestly tell you when a complaint comes in.
But what, like how, how far until you follow up with it? If you don't hear back on the first one.
Oh, they're, they're ten to fifteen days and then when I, when I drive through, I would track those whether anything's been done. That's kind of the way the process is with the property and over there and grass and stuff too.
So theoretically, if we.
The problem with the timeline is if I put ten days or I put fifteen days, I'm, there's no guarantee that I, I have no guarantee when they're actually receiving that, like when they're not dating it. You know, I'm here in the evenings working part-time, so I'm like, I'm not here every day. I cannot physically be here every day to check and keep those kind of timelines. So, I'm more than happy to do the spreadsheet, but like I literally physically can't check and, and clock the days every single day.
The letter could say from the date of the letter, even if you gave them an extra four or five days.
Right, no, that's the way, fifteen days from the date of the letter, yeah.
You could even do, like, whatever, whenever you do check it, just put a date in and say, I checked on October first and nothing had been.
That's kind of how the county operates.
I mean, that's kind of the spreadsheet that I have.
Yeah, yeah.
You can just show that to us every month and we'd be like, okay, and we'd be able, you know, we'd be like, okay, well, it looks like this, this group needs to get citations because they're not responding, you know?
Yeah, I mean, I can do that. I can take the, I can take the information that I already have and put it into a spreadsheet and I can, I can share it every month at the meeting.
Cause what I'm.
That'd be great.
What I'm getting at is, is some type of timeline where maybe after like sixty days, it's handled. Whether it's a citation or a court date or something along those lines after two warnings that take about thirty days and then a citation that's two weeks, fifteen days, whatever, then by sixty days, we have a path forward to handling whatever that nuisance is. Or forty-five days.
I don't know what the whole court thing is like, I don't know if that takes forever. It doesn't take forever, but.
Won't be within sixty days.
No, but it's.
But by that time, you got.
That's where that's headed instead of it just being.
You were in Baltimore, weren't you? Ooh, ick.
We're not going to compare that to any other.
No, it's a lot quicker here, let's just say that.
So, do we have a, a current list of, without mentioning names or addresses? Do we have a current list of repeat offenders? Do we have like a top ten?
I can't honestly, I can't honestly answer that.
I got three on the top of my head.
I guess what I'm thinking is.
Previous code enforcement officer, the stuff that was left, was, some was paper and some was online and it wasn't tracked anywhere, so I kind of came into it dark. I don't know what happened to that property before I got here, I'm not going to lie.
Okay, so, it sounds like we have, it sounds like we have some pretty, we have a prominent offender or three or six that maybe we can.
Well, we, we have a, what, the past year we can go off of?
Yeah, since you started doing this. You've been do, you've been doing this for several months now, if not longer, right?
Yeah, I got a list.
Yeah.
I can tell you.
Should have enough.
Untagged cars at one time, or more than that?
I didn't categorize them just by untagged. If it was inoperable, untagged, unregistered, looked like it was broken down, hadn't moved in a long time. This was the list, and this, this is my most current list because the other one is in three or four of the places on here, but probably like twenty-five.
Do we have access to that list?
We should be putting that in the newsletter. If, if we have removed twenty-five cars that were in those categories, who knows that around this town?
Nobody.
Nobody. We should be putting that kind of information in our newsletter and when people start seeing that, they know we're working on those issues.
Yeah, it's absolutely going to be a deterrent, but it's also going to be a uplift of, hey, we're fixing the things that when you go out on a walk.
It's not too late, the newsletter's not done.
It's a good point to get it into the newsletter.
You squeeze a line into Niels.
And on time.
And on time.
It doesn't get you any extra room now.
But I mean, is that, is that something, Michelle, that we can do? Can we put, how can we do that in the town and, I mean, what are, what are our?
Which, put in, we have had eight cars removed or Joe Blow on.
No.
On Lambert Street still has his car out there. That second one is a no.
No.
But, no, I think absolutely, just like you would put any other success. We fixed a water main and we saved a hundred thousand dollars and we managed to clean up the town to the extent of, you know.
These are cars that are, have been removed? No, no, your list, your list there.
Twenty-five.
No, my list, my list is just the observed, noticed, violated.
That's what I mean.
You've had some success, people who've removed after you said please remove or move it off where it is.
None of the inoperable, broken down, untagged.
Okay, well, then you have to think of a better way to word it.
I get super responsive of trailers, like, the trailers parked on the roadway, I've gotten.
Then you start with that in the newsletter, you know, code enforcement update.
Yeah, that's a good idea.
That's what I mean.
What can we do?
Yeah.
So, what are you listing in that list? If we were to put that into the town, it would say.
Town what you want.
Well, you could put just, I mean, just a standard reminder, you could have like a little section, especially like with snow coming, you could, you could have, please remember to get your trailers off the road for public works.
What I meant was, when we were talking, it sounded like she had a list of, of Joan had, it sounded like Joan had a list of vehicles.
Yes.
And I, and I thought that we were saying, put that in the paper.
No, I would say. Little statement of like.
Any good anyway.
A code, a code enforcement report saying that, you know, we, we're. A code, a code enforcement report saying that, you know, we, we're making a concerted effort to enforce the code pertaining to. You know, unlicensed vehicles, untagged vehicles, trailers and such like that. And we'll be providing, providing monthly updates to the mayor and council.
It's quarterly, right? That newsletter?
Yeah, right. Yeah, this past quarter, we removed, or we, we resolved X amount of complaints or X amount of vehicles or whatever. That type of thing.
More generic, yeah. Yeah, that would be very helpful.
And then some kind of general, we appreciate everyone's cooperation and know it will continue.
Nice car you got there. Shame something happened to it.
Michelle, you never, you're never boring, that's for sure.
Joan, you got guidance?
Yeah, oh yeah, I'm good. I will, I'll, I'll gather and then.
And we can talk to you about the property, the, Joan, we can talk to you about the property that Dave's referencing too.
Okay, yeah, that's fine. And any other ones, any other ones off the top of your head that you're aware of?
Block it all out.
Just let me know, maybe I'll check and see if it's on the list that already had it.
Can we squeeze a little blurb in there? So I'll, I'll just draft something up. Into the, like tomorrow, just a little blurb to put in the newsletter, to get it in there now.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, thank you. Thank you, Joan.
Water and sewer bills, process and discussion.
Survivor, pass something around, but you had to have to talk.
You guys heard my numbers at the council meeting, at the council meeting? One thousand seven ninety-nine ninety-one, active, almost seven thousand inactive. And those are all landlords. My process is after thirty days after the water bills are issued. I do a review of all the accounts on anything over ninety days. And issue, just, hey, you don't get to pay your water. You're, you're delinquent by this much, this is what your total bill is, this is how much you are delinquent. After this, after that month, the third month is when we start issuing the shut-off notices. And, and some shut-offs, some do get shut-offs. But that's my process, because it didn't have a process coming into it, so that's kind of what I adopted.
So, all of those delinquents are landlords?
All of the inactive delinquents, yes.
So you got forty, almost forty-two thousand dollars in overdue water bills?
Correct.
It was worse than that before she took care of her.
I'm not faulting anybody, I'm just. I feel better about mine.
So I've been in here, you know, working or whatever, and I've heard people call. And it, it's not a formal process, but could, talk a little bit about what you do when somebody calls you and says. I know I can't, I know this, but I can't afford all of it.
Well, some people I'm a little bit hard on because they haven't been in touch with me in a very long time.
Right.
And two quarters plus. And I will, I typically will require fifty percent down to work with them. And that really does help. And it helps them too, because then they can get their, their bill, their water water control to a manageable monthly payment. Then they're, then they're okay. But I, I just, what can you give me? What can you do for me? What can you give me right now and how much can you give me per month? Because I tell people, and I want them to know, you don't have to pay your water bills, because I know that they're a little expensive. You don't have to pay them upfront in one month's sum. That's a lot. It can be a lot. Monthly just seems to hurt less. So that's what I suggest, after, you know, working out, what can you give me now?
But to your point though, if, if, a lot of these, a lot of these properties are, are, are well beyond. The normal regular bill. This is not one billing cycle. This, which is why you're saying, look, you're, you're a couple grand in the hole. We need to catch up here quick.
Yeah.
Because if you, i- i- if they haven't taken advantage of the monthly payment option, which is there all the time. Then they're in the hole for multiple months, even longer. And they've, they've gone beyond that option. Not that it isn't an option moving forward, but if we give them a payment option and they're already two grand in the hole, you're never gonna get the money back. And, you know, the, we, the town provides the commodity and the commodity's clean water and there's a cost for that. And this is lost revenue, a lot of it. You know, I mean.
I'm wondering if there's a way to, and just thinking, to structure this like the court does with child support. This is what you have to pay every month and you haven't paid, so in addition to this, you owe that, another four thousand dollars. You have to pay what you have to pay and in addition, the court says, that four thousand, you're gonna pay. Usually not that much more, twenty-five bucks, thirty bucks. So that they're paying down that arrearsage, but they've got to stay current.
Right.
And if they don't stay current, then the whole arrearsage also legally becomes due. And then they skip town. But that's a different set of problems.
Now, that forty-one thousand dollars, how many are at the cutoff point?
Yeah, I mean, why are you not cutting people off?
Over a hundred and twenty days, twenty-two thousand five hundred twenty dollars.
So half of them.
Out of bad group, out of the hundred and twenty, that number is actually a little less right now because I did issue some shut-off door hangers. And I've gotten lots of payments.
And most of them are landlords?
No, no, because these are all active accounts we're talking about right now. Inactive accounts, this is seven thousand.
They've already had their service turned off, but they still are accruing the.
No, they have a new tenant in there.
Oh, okay.
They have a new tenant in there and the old tenant didn't pay the water bill.
Well, that's not our problem.
And the landlord won't.
Well, the landlord's responsible.
Landlord is ultimately responsible, not the tenant.
If the landlord loses water, it, it's their business. If they, if they don't have water, they don't have tenants.
They don't have a habitable place and they are in violation.
Cut their water off, they'll come up with the money.
To find a way to.
The landlord is the most concerning for me. I'm in, I'm in favor of making it hurt for landlords that don't keep up on their water.
If we have to do anything official, but.
Yeah, come find me if I ever get late.
A couple, a few instances where it's a rental property and the landlord, the owner of the property. Has, has the town bill the tenant, okay? There's, that, that's not normal, but there are some.
That's not normal.
But ultimately, in any rental case, it is the property owner's response, ultimate responsibility of that bill. They, the property owner is responsible.
I would love it if we came up with that was the rule.
Stop billing the tenants.
If I stop paying my water bill, I'd be shut off.
Responsibility goes to the property owner.
I, I would like it if it were in the code or whatever, however you do this. If it were written in a new property agreement, a lease agreement, signed by our landlords, that they are responsible. We're not going to bill your tenant.
Well, they're a property owner, they're responsible. They're legally responsible.
But you, but your point is, you don't want to be the middleman. You want to have only the landlord bill.
Yeah, there, there are some towns that will not put the name in other than the owner's, the bill in, in another name other than the landlord.
Should be. We should, we should, I think her point is we should, in those cases, we should only bill, it should be made that we only bill.
And the landlord can bill the tenant however they want.
Landlords all know that the bill's not paid, their water could get cut off.
So I'm.
None of them that are thinking, well, that's not my responsibility. It is their responsibility. They know that.
They just don't wanna pay it.
Right.
Are the new tenants paying? So are these just like old tenants' debts? All right, well, what I'm inclined, and I would, I wanna go through and look for the right words. But I'm inclined to think that perhaps we need to contact landlord with a nice, strong letter. That says, you still owe us money. And, yeah, well, whenever. Um, well, the fourth one, wait, you, you still owe us money and you need to pay it or we are going to cancel your.
Account.
General housing license and turn your water off.
Yes.
If we turn your water off, you will then be in violation of the county minimum livability code. And some nice person from Carroll County government is gonna come pay you a call about that.
That money will be the same day.
Going forward, we're, I think we get at least that seven thousand dollars back. But then going forward, the bills will be sent to you.
Have to be sent to, especially landlords who are scofflaws and are not paying.
I was here when she had a call from somebody like that. Somebody who owed thousands of dollars and said, I'm not paying it because I don't want to.
Well, then we're not serving you because we don't want to.
We're not here telling somebody if they owe two hundred and fifty bucks that they have to pay today or else we're gonna shut their water off to their family.
Right.
We're telling these people that are hundred and twenty, you know, three hundred and sixty days late, that they need to pay the water bill. And ultimately, in, in the case of landlords, they have the money. They just would rather it be in their pocket than, than for bills that they need to pay. If the water got shut off, he'd respond that day.
Their tenant's gonna be calling them and screaming, I paid the water bill and why did they turn it off? They're gonna call you first. And apologize for that, but.
We have door hangers, right?
Oh, yeah.
One front and back door.
Some people never use their front door.
So do we need to do any, I mean, I guess you might help her write the letter, but other than that?
Well, I think, I think for immediate purposes, that's, that'll get us started. But we may want to look at jurisdictions that refuse to bill tenants. And how they go about doing that, what's in their code, what exactly is in our code for the responsibility, you know? And if something needs to be cleaned up, we can do that.
And we could make, maybe try to get that done so it's sort of clean, let's starting January first, ixne on the bill and the tenants thing. You know, that's just ridiculous.
That means that you have to change your lease and your rent. That's the way it has to be done. And there goes screaming, ooh, you're gonna get screaming.
Okay, well, that's great for seven thousand dollars worth of inactives. Now we have six times that amount of money that's sitting out there that we are not collecting. And we have a compassion issue that's, that's holding back from doing what we need to do. So I think this is where we need to have a process that Kim can say, this is the process for that. And so she doesn't get stuck with mom and two children calling her up and saying, my water can't be cut.
And never ask anybody what they can afford to pay.
For her to be in and she's the one, you know, making the deals, right? She shouldn't have to be making the deals. We need to make the deal and the process and the policy that you can just follow.
And that too.
Here now.
Now, so, so the active accounts are also landlords who have tenants that haven't paid.
How, how big of percentage is that?
Do you have any idea?
I can get you guys that number and email it to you tomorrow.
Cause that might help out a lot, but, but still, to Dave's point, I do like the, the idea of like how the county does it. Where they stay current with the current bill and then pay a portion of the.
Arrears.
Arrears.
Yeah.
And, and you have to keep doing that or else it's gonna all become, I mean, that's how most debt.
That's how most debt is.
Is, you know?
You're right, Kim, it's actually, it's hard, but it's better. It's because otherwise these people are, no pun intended, drowning in these bills and panicking. And then they call you and what can you afford to pay me? Well, I can't afford to give you more than forty-five dollars a month. Well, I'm sorry.
You're just gonna drown then.
We're gonna have to turn you up. Call, call HSP, call your mother-in-law. We can't, we can't continue to operate with this kind of loss.
Now, it has their.
Yeah, they have a process.
They have a process and you, you're not gonna be able to negotiate at all. You know, there's certain period of time where I'm sure they, they cut you off.
So we, we actually have one landlord who has six units. Each one of the tenants have a water bill in their name, six separate bills, but only one shut off. In that case, if someone defaults on their bill, we're shutting everybody off. That means, that's a problem. So I strongly suggest that we, if we look at this, we make it in the code where the landlords are responsible for the bills. And if the landlord wants to sub-meter, they do that on their own dime.
I thought we already had that.
I mean, cause then that, that takes the responsibility off, like the town's not the bad guy shutting five people off. The landlord is not paying the bill.
You're less likely to have mayhem in the apartment building.
And, and then you got folks that are calling us up because we shut the building off and they're paid.
Yeah, they paid their bill.
And then we have to deal with that issue.
That's huge.
The landlord. He couldn't care, cause he's gonna say the, the tenants pay.
And as, and as far as the, the, the past dues on landlords' bills and stuff like that. We have put liens on properties, but these folks continue to rent. And they're not selling the property, so the liens don't affect them. So we definitely need a policy in place where we could shut off the water. But, but again, they've reoccupied the units. And now these new tenants might be paid up and we're shutting them off and they're being disadvantaged.
But with the rental license, is there any, um, uh, set in, in the policy to say? We can revoke the license in these instances?
Yeah, I know you, we can revoke the licenses. I don't, right off the top of my head, remember exactly what the grounds for that are, but.
I would imagine code violation that would follow under.
We, we shouldn't accept any new tenant in a building where a past water dues.
Yeah, revoke it right away.
So we could then refuse occupancy, shut the water off immediately.
Yeah.
And that water is not getting turned back on until the landlord makes guilt, good on the past due amount. And in most cases, the landlord's taking their previous tenant to court anyway for back rent and things like that. So they can, you know, deal with all that later.
And then we wouldn't have to worry about that long-term if we get everybody so that the landlord is the bill payer, period.
That seems to be consensus to get, get that in place.
Well, it protects the landlord as well at the end, if he has, you know, a tenant that's unable to pay.
Right.
They start the eviction process or, you know, whatever process they have on their end. And to get a tenant, you know, they vet the tenant and they, they get somebody in there that's paying their bills on time. They're gonna change their lease to up their rent to cover the water bill.
I mean, we, the museum has a tenant and we. I don't know why you wouldn't wanna do that as a tenant. I mean, the museum has a tenant and we pay the water bill because we don't want her not paying her rent. To affect us not having water downstairs, so, you know, it's part of our agreement with her that, you know, it's built in. But, yeah, I mean, it just seems like.
Then people say, well, you know, the rent's high, but the water's included.
Some landlords don't want a sub-meter because then it's all, that's extra cost, extra work, extra plumbing on them. That's how it should be done. That's how it should be done.
What, sub-metering?
Yes.
If this is all going well, we wouldn't be having this conversation.
I know it can't happen easily because of where we are, but if you have an apartment building with six units in it.
Six electric.
In, in the perfect world, the town should supply one feed, one meter. We build the landlord, the owner, all the water that goes through that meter.
Right.
If he's got six units, then he either does it one of two ways, he or she does it one of two ways. He either doesn't sub-meter, which a lot of them won't because it's a lot of work, and read individual meters, that's the fairest way. And split that master bill up six ways or based on each one's usage. Or they don't sub-meter at all and he says, it's, it's a hundred thousand dollars, I'm splitting it by six, y'all get the same bill. And it's a lot of work for the, the landlords to sub-meter individually. Because it's all private plumbing, it's all, somebody's gotta go in and read it. We ain't reading it, we're reading one out in, in the right of way.
Sure, that's how.
Electric's handled.
Right.
Like electric's sub-metered, why shouldn't water?
Same, same philosophy like when you have like strip malls and stuff like that, where you have.
Building is, that building is owned by one person and there's six, eight, ten units in there and you might have. A doctor's office, a dentist office, a dog groomer at the other end. I'd wanna submeter it, that's the fairest way, but they all don't do that. But the county would put one meter in, if it's one owner, gets one meter. If you wanna submeter, submeter. But you're getting billed for the whole kit and caboodle and you divide it up the way you.
Give them a little bit more time if we want to, but I mean, the the rest of the people in the town are paying their bills and we got forty two thousand dollars.
That's in all fairness, that is, that is really important to say is that. You know, everybody who is paying on time and paying regularly is carrying the load for the people who aren't.
Lot of whom don't even live here.
Landlord, yeah.
Does um, does an a new policy rectify these, the these, this back owed money?
It will help greatly.
The the new policy for the landlords getting billed definitely should be developed.
Will Wayne, will that help us moving forward? What do we do to get that money back? Cause it sounds like there's several steps we're gonna have to take here. Sounds like putting a new policy in does not clear, does not rectify. The majority of the money that we still are owed. It just helps us moving forward.
And it it's.
So how do we get our money?
I think it could, over time, it might take a while, but if you as institute a policy that, for example. Um, if you owe money on your uh on your property, we won't give you uh, you know, a new license. Time your license is up, you you owe money, you don't get a new license. Well, it may take eighteen months before their their license is due, but at that point.
Can we cancel licenses based on?
You can, you can. In fact, I'm just looking at that.
Forty two thousand dollars, a lot of money.
Oh, it's crazy.
It's not fair to the people who pay their bills. And I, you know, we can argue about whether they're higher or not. We're not, it doesn't sound like we're talking about indivi- it sounds like we have people that pay and then the landlords don't pay. So they don't need to rent, they don't need to do business if they can't.
Manage their properties, yeah.
We have a fair share of individuals as well.
Okay.
So that I think like Wayne said, a new policy for landlords and a new lea- a new lease agreement would be extremely helpful.
And a monthly payment pran- plan document, something that's standard. That this is what it is.
For everybody else.
You default, then you owe the lump sum.
For anybody who hasn't, a monthly.
So I have a quick comment and then a question about helping non landlords with back um water bills. Comment, um, the properties that are already submetered. We need to have a uh a way for tenants to receive a copy of the water bill even though. It's going, if it goes to the landlord, just so they know what their usage is, this six apartment building. I would want some way for a tenant in that building to know what their water usage was and not purely rely on the landlord saying. It was this much. So just some way that they can come into town hall and say, hey, I'm this unit. It's broken down uh in our system for sending the bills out. On this unit, I want a copy sent to me as well, just so I can verify what my usage is. Just the ones that are already subdivided.
So in that particular case with this property in question, there are town owned meters, there are six, one shut off. So they are actually part of the M D thirty one project work. I would say if we. We could possibly draft a letter or. Something and and install a single meter. And then make the landlord, you know, responsible for the, you know, we could. Make him replace the meters with his own and then he can collect from the tenants.
And if we can rectify.
How how often does he call in here?
Quite a bit.
Yeah, so it's very time consuming, this particular gentleman.
But but to his point, you you have six meters though, so you could take.
Tenants get a copy and the landlord gets a copy now.
That is.
In that situation.
But moving forward where the bills are only in the landlord's name, if we have buildings that have multiple submeters. That we have a process that they can reach out and say, hey, I'm this meter. Please send me a bill as, just a copy so I can make sure that he's not charging me fifty bucks more a month, that kinda thing.
So there are two apartment buildings within the town with that structure where they have individual or they're submetered. One landlord pays the water bills completely. It's great. He pays the bills, he gets the money for the water from the tenants and their rent. I would strongly suggest that with this other larger property too, and then there's, it's resolved. As far as the.
As as long as we're confident with with that, that there's nobody else that might be affected by somebody saying, hey, you owe me more, then we're good. Question, um.
Most of the landlords. Most of the landlords that do actually pay the bill, their uh tenants, some of their tenants. Get a duplicate bill sent to them. Uh, and there's other tenants, I don't even have tenant information for them.
Right, if they wanted that bill just to have an avenue to get it. And then uh, does Maryland have any type of water and sewer assistance program? They got rid of the COVID era one in twenty twenty three. Do we know of any HSP?
So you, yeah, Human Services Program of Carroll County, which is the, what they call the community for Carroll County, this, I mean, if different counties have different. Assistance programs um has money for um utilities, so.
They exclusively say electricity and heating.
I'm on their board and I know that they'll do water, but I'm gonna put a caveat out, we did hear. That the state and or the feds might be changing how that's done and it and it might be going through a different agency, so. I'll continue to keep you all posted on that. The problem with that Connor and Gary knows this. And the staff probably all know it is that you have to be really, really poor to requ- to to qualify for a lot of these programs. But there, but it is there and Kim gives it out.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, Kim gives it out.
Know what was, what existed now.
Yeah, and I mean, it it won't disappear, it just, well, it's just gonna move someplace else, so it's, you know.
Kim makes that well known throughout the year.
I talk about it more more in the winter than in the summer, but I usually, at least every other month, I put it in my report.
And keep in mind, Hugh, HSP, I work with them closely, specifically Drew, he uh. I had a resident that had assistance from them last September. She needed assistance in August and they couldn't do anything for her until this month.
Right.
Once a year.
I I know that they run and they also run low on funds, but.
Yeah, it's like a pot they get from the state or the county or the feds and once it's gone, it's gone, so, yeah.
And churches and other organizations help out quite a bit too with folks, you know.
Yeah.
We see that a lot.
So I think also too, it's important to to ask and note or understand that is. You know, you all know it's pretty documented that we work everything possible. With with somebody who's behind and it's it's the last resort to turn somebody off, but. We need to turn them off if if it comes to that.
Comes to that point.
It's unfortunate, but that's the bottom line. We're well, way more flexible than that, but.
Well, that's why we'd like to have the maybe more, just so it's not so much on you all, to have that little bit more structured process, maybe we could draft something up and. And work with that.
That's usually, you know, it's been successful with a few shut offs that we've had.
I know it's not a huge thing.
Pretty quick.
That's telling.
So what 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 is going to be that?
Where are we now?
Process for, we're not talking about landlords now, we're talking about homeowners that have fallen behind in their water bill. It starts out at thirty days and it hits ninety days and what is our process going forward going to be? So what happens, Kim, at thir- at thirty days, so you send that bills, the bills are due in thirty days. Okay, at the thirty day level, they don't pay a bill, what happens today?
That's what I do my review and send letters, delinquent letters, just letting them know they're delinquent.
Okay.
This is how, this is. This is how much is delinquent, this is current or.
Okay, and then nothing happens and now we're at sixty days, delinquent. Is that when you're looking again the second time?
If I'm looking again the second time, the third time would be the third month is the door hanger.
Okay, so at ninety days, we already have a new bill out, going out because we're at the new quarter and they haven't paid. Anything on on the last quarter. And then you put a a door hanger. So now not only do they owe, for they owe six months at that point. Okay, so it's six months.
No, it's start of the third month. It's not, they don't already have another bill due.
No, but October first, the bills will come out. They was saying November first, you send a letter out. And and then December first, that's sixty days, and then January first is the new bill and they haven't paid.
The old bill, forgetting the door hanger.
The door hanger does come a couple of days before the new bill arrives, but yes.
Saying that you're gonna be shut off.
You will be shut off.
So you got, you got a shut off notice, I owe three hundred dollars from the last quarter and I owe three hundred dollars that I'm gonna get in three days after the. The door hangers on me, so I'm in the rear six hundred bucks. Well, not in the rear six hundred bucks, I'm in the rear three hundred and I got another three hundred current. Okay, so that's that's already too late.
Yeah.
We're too late.
But it's gotta be more than, it's gotta be even worse than that. Because if people paid the three hundred when the next bill came, you wouldn't be forty two thousand in the rent.
That's right.
So there's gotta be. That everybody somehow is not paying that three hundred dollars when the second bill comes. See what I'm saying? On on December. So you've just, and people, you're nice and we're nice and you say, how much can you give us and they say, I, most I could do is a hundred. And you say, okay, and then pretty soon they're a thousand in arrears and.
And that's why we need to come up with a process that says. Maybe not something as, you know, open as what can you give us? You have to give us this percentage or something like that, you know. What in, you know, that, right.
On the current bill.
You know, yeah, I mean, like you have to give us at least. Twenty five percent, I don't know, I don't wanna make up the number, but I mean, that you guys would say you're, you try to get hands.
Delinquent account each, one might be six hundred, one might be eighteen hundred, you know.
Person, and how delinquent they are. I had a person recently who. Didn't want to pay and um said that. I need fifty percent down, fifty percent down by Thursday or we're shutting you off. I don't have that. Well, guess what? I have it. In cash. In my hand, paid.
Yeah.
Okay, but that but that's not, that's not a process. You you should not be in that.
You shouldn't be in in the middle of that.
Trying to help, I'm trying to help. That's not, that's not, that was great work, but that's not the process, it's not a process.
So thoughts of something like at the end of the delinquent quarter, so. Before, by the time the second bill comes out, there's a fifty percent down. With a payment plan to where you're maybe no more than, you're no worse than a bill behind.
To catch up.
And then if you hit ninety days on the next bill, you put fifty down and you have a payment plan to catch up over. Three months, so you're, or two months, so you're splitting bill number one in half and then pay. Half of the remainder for two months or a third of the remainder for that quarter, something along those lines. Or if they don't have that payment plan in place, it gets shut off before the next bill gets sent out. Some of these water bills are big.
Fifty percent or or something, or else the water gets shut off.
But then that fifty percent also helps get you back current, cause it's not the full amount where you're two periods behind.
You're only paying fifty bucks a month.
And you have that plan moving forward. And even if we know what the next bill is, you can work that into the next payment plan. And if you're not current by bill number three.
The full things do.
That's very complicated.
It's very complicated.
If, Kim, if you send the bills out October first. And then no, you receive no money. November first, you consider them late, correct? At that time, they don't have, they still have three months to pay if they want paid monthly. But what if, and it's in the code, that it may be cut off after thirty days? And say that unless we receive fifty percent or one month. Or it will be cut off, I think you you're not gonna. You're gonna solve the problem faster than wait ninety days because then they're, they're really in deeper trouble. And once you get in deeper trouble, we all know we've had those bills just add up. And I just think if we address it after thirty days a little stronger. And say that they have to come up with either fifty percent or that that month of October or whatever, thirty third of it. Immediately, or it gets cuts off.
I think we definitely gotta narrow the gap between.
Yeah.
I think it's thirty day, and it's in our code, thirty days.
I don't know.
And not just, it's a philosophy of too nice.
Must contact town hall to make arrangements.
That should be on. Door hanger too.
The arrangements.
She's not getting to the door hanger though at thirty days.
Saying, if you put the door hanger on thirty days, maybe we don't shut it off until forty five.
That's true.
But if you have the door hanger on at thirty days.
People know you're serious.
And then there needs.
Let the hole get bigger, the bigger old gap.
Payment plan and say, you know, okay, now we're, we're set, but.
So, so.
If you make a payment plan, there has to be language that says if you miss a payment on this payment plan.
Yeah, the full things do.
Right.
Couple of things, um, so Wayne, do you see an issue? What are, what are the pitfalls in doing this? The reason I'm I'm asking you is you're. You and Kim are like in direct contact with our constituents. And I think it's valuable to know. With what you see as far as pitfalls are concerned with, you know, any of the policies that we might implement.
Well, I think that in the last year, we've probably shut more people off than in the thirteen and a half years I've been here.
Right.
So our enforcement side has kicked in a lot more than in the past. It's, it's not that people's water bills have changed because we froze rates the last two years.
Right.
So they're expected, right? So everybody has an expected amount of water usage. I think we need a policy in place. What does that mean for the public works department? Well, that means that we have to go out, it takes more manpower and time to hang notices. And oftentimes we find that curb stops aren't accessible, which are where the shut off valves are, and sometimes the shut off valves don't work. So we've encountered two this year that we actually had to replace and sometimes that means digging up the street. So there's a cost associated with that too, which is anywhere from twenty five hundred to three thousand dollars to do that repair if that valve doesn't work. Now, the valve should work. It's a shut off point, a public shut off point. If the, if a residence valve doesn't work inside of their house, we get called, we shut it off at the street. Uh, you know, it's, it's not an excuse, it should work, but you know, um. It's something that we haven't had on a maintenance schedule to go out, check where somebody's curb stop is, exercise the valve. Your hundreds of valves, they're all in different locations, we're just getting things mapped out. Uh, some of the maps were inaccurate, so there's all kinds of operational things that come into play. Um, but at the end of the day, um, we have to, we have to enforce it.
And there's a charge.
The right thing to do.
There's a charge for that.
There's a, yeah, so. It's a hundred and fifty dollar charge to reconnect somebody's water, so we go out, we shut their water off. If it's ten minutes, four hours, two days, a week later, they pay a hundred and fifty bucks. Now, the the only thing that I can say about that is when somebody's already in a disadvantaged position and they can't afford the water bill. That's a hundred and fifty more dollars they have to come up with for us to turn them on. But there's also a charge associated with the expense of the department going out and turning somebody's water on. So. I would recommend that we only do it during business hours. That a way there's not overtime and travel and all that kinda stuff involved and maybe even look at lowering. The uh disconnect fee, the reconnect fee.
Lower the, the ti- like making the timeframe a little bit better too, you know, maybe like twenty four hours or something.
Well, I mean, if you, if you, if you hang a door tag in thirty days and you still haven't contacted town hall, that hundred and fifty dollars. It's gonna have to be paid because you didn't do the work of just making a phone call and saying.
that hundred and fifty dollars, it's gonna have to be paid because you didn't do the work of just making a phone call and saying, hey, I can't pay the bill.
At that point.
Well, it, it shouldn't get to shut off. If it gets to shut off, it doesn't have to get to the shut off point.
Yes.
Yeah, well, the reason I ask that is, I mean, we can make a policy, but if we're not prepared to go to, turn things off. I didn't, you know, I was wondering.
I think we got a lot more prepared when we.
Turn things off and then, so there's teeth to the, to the policy.
We do that now. We're just saying we're tightening up how, you know.
The policy's there, just enforcing it, and we do need to, to tighten up the, the.
Well, the ti-, the terms. The other thing I wanted to know is, are we talking about, are we talking about, um, what are the size of the bill? Like for, for, for a month in arrears, are we talking about three hundred dollars? Are we talking about people who use four, five hundred dollars worth?
We have the average.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, I mean, an average water bill is four hundred and twenty.
Okay, so, but that's what we're talking about?
We have some codes that are thousands in arrears.
No, 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 I mean, per month.
Uh, per month is between four hundred and five hundred. That's an average. But an average, I would say.
Per quarter.
Per quarter.
I mean.
Per quarter. I'm sorry, I meant to say.
I knew what you meant.
I mean. So if they were monthly, yes, a hundred, a hundred and four, let's say a hundred and fifty bucks.
But she's saying a quarter, five hundred, five hundred seems like a, are we talking about tenants in an apartment?
Well, if, if you.
Bill's about four eighty a quarter.
Kevin, when I run the revenue projections for water and sewer for the budget, we, I know that based on, uh, you know, we base it basically on ten thousand gallons a quarter.
Right.
Now, some are lower, some are higher, but you run, you run that number and, and based on the, the, the base rates and then the usage rate, you can figure that out exactly. And I have that number. It's, at, at ten thousand, it's, it's probably around less than four hundred, a little less than four hundred.
Cause that's what we're.
Like a hundred and thirty bucks a month.
Yeah.
No, I was just trying to figure out if we have people who aren't paying their bill that are running up bills of five hundred dollars a quarter, that's a lot of water if they're in a, an apartment.
So we, we, we have people that are regulars as far as not paying bills, and.
I don't think it, I don't think it's the one month. I think it's the twelve months past.
It's accumulate, accumulate.
It's multiple quarters that are now in the thousands.
There is, there is another option. I talked with a vendor about it. So the vendor that supplies the iPro meter, the iPro meter, the smart meter that we use is around two hundred and fifty, three hundred dollars. For a hundred and fifty dollars more, you can actually get one with a valve inside of it. And the valve automatically exercises, and with the press of a button, you can shut somebody's water off if for non-payment. So then you avoid the conflict of confronting somebody and the whole mess of that. I, I've had two encounters with people that were extremely upset and reactionary, so to speak. And for the most part, people are reasonable and they understand that they're at fault and why we got to this point. But with some people that are, you know, consistently late on bills and everything like that, that would give us the ability to, like I say, for a hundred and fifty dollars more, shut them off.
Remotely.
Remotely.
Plus, that's a lot of time savings there too.
And then the meters in those instances?
You're not talking across the board.
No, I'm not talking across, and, and folks that.
Customers would say.
But at the same, at the same time though, you, you, that's a current problem, but that doesn't, that doesn't change. Like say, you know, somebody sells a house, and now the problem person's at a house that doesn't have one of these smart meters. You're not gonna put smart meters at problem houses. You're, and, and the policy is really the issue there too, because you could have that where it can automatically turn it off. But if you never turn it off.
Right.
You know?
Well, we have to have a policy.
So it has, I, I would think that at thirty days, a door hanger goes on. If they still haven't responded in another ten days, they shut off.
How do we adopt that? Right now? I mean, can we do that?
I, I don't know, um.
I mean, it definitely should be written down.
Yeah, it needs to be careful. We need to make sure that whatever we say matches what we've got in here. And I just, I don't know it well enough off the top of my head.
But, yeah, I would imagine it needs to be written.
Cut it off, that much I do know.
Read the meters of shut off, uh, properties.
We do, and the reason why we read the meters is in case somebody tampers with them. So about ten years ago,
Get the tool.
We had a, a gentleman that lived on Church Street, and he had a meter vault, and he would turn his meter back on. He cut our locks off, he did all kinds of things. He actually gave us our lock back in the envelope at Town Hall. Yeah, so.
He was a colorful fellow.
Kim, you're gonna be in tomorrow, right?
She's leaving, this is her last name.
You're not in tomorrow? I thought if I sit down with you at eleven, I wanna, I wanna see these numbers a little bit better and how long, how far back they are. Because if they're so far back.
Six, seven hundred dollars.
At fifty percent, they're not gonna be able to do it.
Yeah.
You know, so we're gonna have to come up with some kinda plan to get them caught up somehow, tiered. And then going forward, you know, thirty days, you must contact Town Hall and come up with a plan, must, must have at least that one month to go forward or be cut off.
I think there's, there's, there's certain ones you're probably gonna wanna start with first, for sure.
Oh, yeah.
I mean, and they're gonna be, they're gonna be the hardest to.
I'm already starting on one, I just can't, nobody, either gives him the message or he doesn't call back.
He, he didn't get it.
Again, I think overall, we gotta look at some verbiage for the process. And there's not just gonna be one specific process moving forward until right away.
Till you get off.
You know, till we get it all together, you know, but I think we gotta get some verbiage together.
I think there could be a process moving forward, and I think there has to be whatever care needed to get this forty-two thousand dollars back.
That's what I'm saying, how far back. You can't say fifty percent, you can never get it.
Get the verbiage down and get that new process going, so that moving forward, we're not adding to this four, I'm sorry, pointing over, adding to this forty-two thousand dollar.
We'll actually do the operation. These payment plans of, when they do create a payment plan, do they sign a, a, like a contract to say this is the?
Yeah, because it's over the top.
See, that, that, that should be part of that process. And then that way you can go back and say, hey, you said you were gonna pay two hundred and forty a month.
Yeah, you have to come in and sign this and give me some money.
You get behind again, cut off. Okay, all right. All right, thank you.
Start your next morning shift.
All right.
Developer rights and responsibilities agreement.
Well, anyway, so, um, let me get, shift gears here just a little bit. So, um, Director Myers, he started a draft version of, uh, DRRA for the town, and Michelle provided a copy of the county's draft, uh, DRRA draft. Uh, both documents are in the folder tonight. I reviewed both, um, and made some notes and comments on that. Um, I don't know how much you guys wanna get into discussion. I mean, I might make, make a suggestion in, in time, the essence of everyone's time is that if I take Wayne's, what he's already started, take my comments, add some things in, I think from the, from the counties that I like, and I think we should at least entertain and look at and get.
We also, I had a draft initially too, so there's several floating around.
I think we should put together the different versions and, and get something to you that we can all look at in more detail. I mean, I don't know if anybody's had time to look at what's in, in the folder, um.
I haven't, but I like, I like your recommendation, so I think that's a good idea.
Yeah, I mean, you, you got the wells at two hundred and fifty gallons per minute, or gallons per day, per unit that they have to bring in to the town. There's one, they, one little housekeeping thing, I think, in this one. Uh, you have town, you have town in New Windsor, town.
Those, we have to go through all of that. Well, that's one of my, my main things.
Just in the very beginning have, the town in New Windsor here, thereafter will be known as the town.
Yeah, some of the, the reference to, uh, the county made, the county uses a reference as the, um, applicant. The applicant.
Right.
And where we were saying owner or developer, we need to come up with some, I, you know, some consistent verbiage there.
Thereafter will be known as applicant.
Myself, but, I mean, it can be owner, developer, something, but whatever we decide on, just can, again, consistently throughout the doc.
But just before we, we, we move on with that, um, everyone here felt like.
That was my question.
We wanted to use this, to have this tool and at least explore it and, so I don't want you guys doing a lot of work and then you come back and say, nah, we don't wanna use it. Because I'm, I think it's a tool, you know, I think it's a tool that we should have available to us. Whether we use it in the future or not, don't know, but I think it should be something available. And I wanna make sure everybody else at least gives a head nod that they feel that way.
I agree with that.
However, saying that, this will probably only be possibly one time.
And that is not unheard of at all.
Okay.
Might not be ever, who knows? Might not be ever, who knows?
That one time is when we're gonna wanna have it in place.
That's why you want it in the.
You don't wanna, you don't wanna have that situation come up and then be like, oh, we don't have that, now we gotta quick get it together.
Right.
So I think I saw a lot of head nods, Gary, so.
I, I'm on record for saying I think we need it.
Okay.
All right, I will, I will combine a couple of versions together and get a, a draft version, get it to you all um, as soon as I can. That way we can, you guys can look at it and, I mean, I know you guys all got other stuff going on, but then at least go through one draft versus going through my pencil marks here of everything and three different.
Yeah, I can't read your pencil.
I know, not too many.
Um, I do have a question.
But is there, you say there's only potentially one time that this could go on. Is there another potent, I mean, is there another area that we?
See, once guy rises in, in New Windsor, I mean, you, you don't know what the fut-, I mean, this, this policy could be used in fifty years.
Right.
You don't know.
Right.
Yeah, who knows? It's the expansion zone, so there's possibilities.
What changes is gonna be to current development?
Well, I'll be, I'll be here fifty years from now, so.
You'll be on the town council in fifty years.
I'll be on the council.
It's not like we got this line.
Connor's the only one, well, Connor and Will have a chance.
That's true, that's true.
They could be here.
Two? Wayne don't have a chance.
About, yeah, Wayne, Wayne will be here forever.
You feel that ball and chain, Wayne?
Hey, Wayne will say, I've had enough, I'm getting my camper and I'm going.
Not anytime soon.
Not anytime soon, please, Wayne.
All right, anybody have anything else?
So, so the only thing that I wanna say with my version, it's more technical than anything. There's nothing legal really in it. It's more like particulars as far as operational and expectations and things like that.
Bullet points?
Bullet points, um, so. I kinda looked at what Hampstead had and then mirrored that in a way, but kinda where it would fit us a little bit better because we're smaller.
Yeah, I think that's the blend, cuz Michelle's version came from the state, right?
It's essentially the state enabling legislation, so. And most of the jurisdictions that I have seen, including Carroll County, um, track the state legislation, uh, pretty closely. Because again, this is not gonna be an agreement. This is just an authorization for an agreement. So we also need to look, and I keep looking at Wayne, he's not making eye contact with me, that the water and sewer section in this book probably hasn't been seriously technically reviewed since himself was around in charge of it. So we wanna make sure, things like how, you know, do you have to bring in water? Well, of course you have to bring in water. Well, then you got a developer that I worked with many, many times in this jurisdiction whose response was always, show me, show me where it says I have to. We don't want that. I don't wanna have that conversation ever again.
To a portion of that.
Yeah, it just needs to be looked at, cuz some of it, it, you know, it's like cesspools. We don't, I don't think we have a lot of those left.
Not that we know.
So there, there is an updated version on the sewer, on the, uh, server. I started tweaking things and getting rid of things.
On the water sewer.
On the water sewer plan, uh, or code, rather, so.
And I don't have one of those.
You, you'll see some of those references in the DRRA that, that I made, um, and, and so we're already working on that, so.
I'll send, I'll send you show that version.
Yeah, and I, you know, probably the smart thing to do is after we all have a look at everybody's and, you know, then maybe we sit down for an hour and hack it out.
Okay. There are motion for a German?
I'll make the motion.
Second.
I'll second the motion.
We have motion second for a German. All those who favor singing, we're gonna sing aye.
Aye.